This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, hi Tom. Okay, everybody, it's. It's okay, are we recording? Okay.
Yeah, it's recording.
Okay. Six o'clock, Justin, okay to start over here?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, so welcome, everybody, to the July 7th meeting of the Monterey Select Board. I am Stephen Weiss, the Chair. To my right is Justin Meeck and who's here at Town Hall as well. We don't have John Waingold logging in currently. Obviously, when he does, or if he does, we'll make a note of that. The first item is going to be a little bit difficult because it's going to require two. So what I'd like to do is table the first item and we'll just move down to item number two, Town Administrator Items. There are some internal transfer requests. Again, that's the year end where one department has multiple bills that need to be paid at the end of the fiscal year. And.
All right, so you have $1,621.35 to be transferred from Board of Selectment Expenses to Legal Expenses, $23.86. I'm sorry, actually, I'd ask, are you going to vote when it's coming out of library wages to town?
I figure it's probably best to do myself.
Anything with the word library.
Library wages, community center wages.
So we've got that one and we've got $856.35 coming from Snow and Ice to Fuel.
Okay, so I move that we we transfer from Board of Selectment Expenses to Legal Expenses, the sum of $1,621.35. Do I second? Okay, all in favor?
Do public comment before the vote?
Sure, absolutely. Is there any public comment? This is for, actually, this is for the Planning Board action. Anybody from the gallery? Tom, anything?
Planning Board, repeat that, I didn't catch.
It's for, it's for Team Light Christian Camp LLC, the Montesem Center Ed. They're just for, they're just they're just, they're legal fees, excess legal fees.
Okay, and that was the $800?
It actually came out to $1,621.35.
And you were transferring from Clerk to?
Board of Selectment Expenses. We have, we have money in our, in our account. That means we can't throw a party at the end of the year.
We also have access in the Clerk account if that makes a difference.
It doesn't, it doesn't, actually. We have, we have, we didn't, a lot, so that's, it's perfectly fine.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Anybody else from? No, there being no other comments from the public. And there was a second, I vote yes. Yes, just vote yes, okay. The next internal transfer is from the Snow and Ice account to Fuel. And again, we're going to look at the fuel cost, the fuel budget numbers will come budget season, because this is for $856.35. And I have, and I have the bill in front of me. So do I have, so I move that we pay from Snow and Ice account to Fuel, $856.35. Do I have a second? Second, public, any, any public comment on our, our fuel usage? No, there being no, no public comment, I move that we actually transfer the $856,035 from Snow and Ice to Fuel. I vote yes. Yes, okay. There are two, from the last meeting, there are two open items, library, the library transfer items, they were agreed to by John Waingold and myself. Justin is recusing himself because it has to do with the library. I just want to let everybody know out there in TV land that, that they still need to be signed in order to have that money transferred. And they have yet to be signed. They are here at Town Hall for John Waingold to sign. And so if anybody sees him on the street, please remind him that they're here in Town, Town Hall, otherwise libraries' bills do not get paid.
Well, and hopefully he'll show up tonight, too, because you only have until the 15th to do these and you have two more new ones for the library.
Okay, so this is, this is, this is a challenge. Let's, let's go on to item 2B, the second homeowner meeting. And that's always an interesting thing. We've, we've had in the history of Monterey, we have a meeting usually in August for the second homeowners to discuss items that they are, or to answer questions that they would have about the operations of Monterey. It's very valuable and I was reminded by, by some members of the Coffee Club that we have yet to schedule it. So that's my bad. There's a recommendation out there for the second Saturday in August, which is the 14th. And we would be available to do it both live and via Zoom. And usually we have it about 10:00, 10:00 AM in the morning on, on, on that Saturday here in Town Hall, fortunately. Okay, so I move that we have a second homeowner meeting on the second Saturday of August, which is the 14th, at 10:00 AM in Town Hall. We should let, we should let Steve Moore know as well, so he can post it in the, in the Monterey News and it will be on the website as well. Second, oh, okay, so all in favor? Aye. Yes. The, the item number three, Clerk Office Coverage.
So I met with Terry today and in the meantime, before, should anything happen, and she's on vacation and out for multiple periods, we will find a clerk from another town that will have access to her computer to be able to stamp a death certificate if necessary. That'll be, you know, last, worst case scenario. Terry and I are working on a job description for an Assistant Town Clerk as well as a Help Wanted ad and we will get that put together and show it to you and then hopefully advertise and find someone to fill the position.
Okay, so we've confirmed that it is legal to have a Town Clerk from another town fill in if, if the need be?
Yes, we would just have to appoint them as a temporary or assistant or whatever and they wouldn't, she would need to give them their own access to the computer so that they're not signing her name.
Right. And, and they would be paid out of the Assistant Town Clerk? Or we're, we have, we have two line items, we have Temporary Employee, we still have a Temporary Employee Line Item?
We could talk about that when we get there. I mean, if the clerk is on vacation, she's not paid for vacation, so it technically could come out of clerk as well. Again, this is the temporary measure until someone is hired. But Terry's not going on vacation for the next three months, so I don't imagine we will use it, but we discussed it so that there is a plan in place, just in case.
Justin, what do you think about that?
Well, temporary, I guess, it's a temporary plan, I guess.
Yeah, it's just, it's just basically to get coverage if we need it. If we don't, if we don't need it, we don't have it, but again, you know.
It's only for emergency situations.
Just for emergency situations.
They're not going to come in and sit in the office.
Right, 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 right. And that's, and that's, and that's fine. I, I, I think that's, I think it's a good point of action. I'm looking forward to seeing the Assistant Town Clerk job description, which we should have.
Terry and I will work on it this month.
Okay, great. Item number four, FY '22 Appointments/Reappointments.
The only one left is Town Council.
So I obviously have been holding off on appointing Jeremiah Pollard to Town Council and I am, I would like to seek or solicit some retainer fees from a few different people. So I have a motion, I, we've, we've had some discussion before, but, so I'm kind of ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we, that the Town Administrator solicit at least three proposals for a retainer, an hourly rate from lawyers or law firms. With the retainer being based on our current memorandum of understanding, retainer description with Jeremiah Pollard. And then go from there and see what proposals we get, including out of the three, out of the three, at least three that we get, I would like at least one to be Jeremiah Pollard and one to be KP Law. That would be, that's my motion.
Okay, I think that's reasonable. I think, so we talked about in last, last session, so I'll second that motion. Tom, are your mics on?
Yeah, I'll turn my meeting dinners, I spared you my chewing, but the only question I have, I think it's reasonable to solicit firms to make sure we're being competitive and there are pending cases, so I just want to make sure that we aren't left high and dry. I know the Planning Board case is with the judge, but when, when she does rule, there may be appeals or other actions needed to be followed up on.
So I am open to continuing, potentially depending on what path we go forward. I don't, I can't speak for the whole board, but I'd be open to looking into having our current council, depending on what path we go, continue the cases that he's currently involved in or negotiating, maybe at least the one proposal that we've looked at that Waingold solicited from KP Law, they were willing to transition cases, it seemed. So I'm not trying to close any doors, I guess, or cause any problems in that.
So I, let me, let me, let me, let me throw something. Because in addition to the, to the legal actions that we currently have, there's a possibility that there will be more legal actions. It is, July is, the end of the year is six months, to the end of 2021 is six months. If we consider extending the appointment of the current council to the end of the year, during that time, we will make our, we will, we will do our study and then make a determination January to begin January or December 2022.
If my thought is a real problem of not having appointed a council at the moment, I would definitely be happy to do that. I'm of the understanding that it is not, that we are in a state of limbo that's not problematic at the moment and that Jeremiah is continuing in the position even though he has not technically been reappointed. So I'm looking, I'm just looking to see what our options are, I guess, and I don't want, and I, I think this is a reasonably safe way of doing it, seems to me prudent.
Fair enough. Okay, so, so let's, so let's vote on, unless the public has any other comments out there. Let's, let's vote on, oh, Susan, hi Susan, sorry about that.
Not at all, I was, I was late raising my hand. I just want to say, having looked over the KP contract, they did mention that coming up to speed on the cases, they would not charge for that. It looked like that was consultation with the TA. I don't know if it included consultation with former council. But it, it seems to me many people transition between firms, so there's got to be ways to do it. Should you make that decision, one would be to have the previous council finish a case up if that needed to happen. But it, I hope that you guys take this possibility seriously. They seem to offer a lot of value added. And it seems like a good possibility for the town that might move things along a little.
Well, my, my concern is, my concern is, and I think expressed at the last meeting, is, and my, I've had much experience with large law firms where our legal fees could double or triple for this town and considering that there are multiple legal actions and I anticipate in this climate, which seems to be a little bit more litigious than in the past, that we face with additional lawsuits. Hopefully not, but you know, you never know, that I'm concerned that, that I've, I've had big, I've had big firms, you know, run up some, some pretty big bills. And in addition, again, with a big firm, you don't get the partner when you, when, if I go to talk to them, generally.
That's not true. They specifically say in that proposal, both of the primary councils they're offering you are both partners. They're both partners and they commit to getting back to you the same day. I don't, you know, people can say they'll do something and then not do it, Steve, we know that. Nevertheless, that is in the proposal. They are saying that they, they are responsive and they are giving you partners, they're both named Brian, go figure, but they're giving you two partners as your lead councils.
I understand, I understand. Again, you know what, I'm, I'm speaking from my own personal experience with, with large law firms, but, but regardless, let's compare apples to apples. I think Justin's motion is valid and let's see how much we're going to charge, each one will charge for retainer and so, and then we'll, we'll make a decision. I, I think that's a reasonable, prudent way of, of moving forward. So I would, since, so I would vote yes. I vote yes. And by the way, since we're, that person's going to take care of.
Discussion.
Yeah, that's number 13. So we, look, we killed two birds with one stone. I know a lot of people don't like that expression, but anyway. We have some minutes to approve, the, the last minute of 6:30, I just received them today, so I'm happy to. Okay, so 6:16, so I make a motion to approve of the minutes for June 16th. Do you have a second?
Second.
And I vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to approve the minutes of 6:16. Number six, review the mail and any correspondence, do we have any?
No.
Okay. Number seven. What I would consider, anyway.
You have all the final edits. Unless you have any more, if you want to take another week to think about them and put it on to approve next week or?
Yeah, personally, I would make a motion to table number seven. I had, I think we made a lot of progress doing large philosophical edits and I'd like to take one week now that, I don't know, you know, I feel pretty confident we're on the same page, we've talked through most of those, like, to, to edit, edit, and so I'd be, any edits that I make to that document, I'd like to go through with the coma, yes, and then get back to that.
Okay.
Number seven.
So you're, you.
I'd make a motion table.
We'll table it till the next time, till the next time we meet. I would love to tick through these, these, these other items here, even though neither of us brought them, but, but I think, I think we, we need to just, you know, put an end to these, to a lot of these discussions because they've, they've, they've already out there in the, in the ether. Grant writer, job descriptions. We have two, currently in Monterey, we have two talented grant writers, which is a program and the, I'm sorry, we have, and in addition to that, we are, we are further blessed with a Town Administrator who has written several grants successfully and, and the Director of Highway Operations has been a very integral part of it. And quite frankly, I, from anybody's viewpoint, our grant writing program has been a success. Now, the generally, when, with a Town Administrator structure, the Town Administrator is the lead, considered the lead grant writer. It doesn't necessarily mean that they write, write all the grants or they prevent the other ones from writing, but they basically provide the supervision over the two grant writers and that's. So the, so the, so the descriptions, I mean, the descriptions already exist, we came up with descriptions when we went out and got grant writers. The Town Administrator, that's one of their duties, so I don't, I don't, I'm not really sure what the, what the, you know, what the other questions would be.
Well, one, one thing I think is that, like you said, we had grant writer descriptions that we hired when we didn't have a Town Administrator. And now that we do and the Town Administrator leads the grant team, it might be worth making a policies and procedures like we just did with the posting for open meeting laws. I had to be something that I would be willing to look into or even work on, just so that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
Just because I think, like you said, we have these job descriptions, since then we've hired a Town Administrator and get everyone on the same page, that's all.
Okay, well.
I didn't even put it on here, but.
The, the downside of volunteering for something like this is that somebody's going to say, do it. And no, I, I think it's a good idea. I would look to see what, how other towns structure it.
Yeah.
Because we don't reinvent the wheel. I'd keep it to a, a one pager if you possibly can and we can, and, and give it to the Town Administrator for his tribute to the board and.
Yeah.
And, okay, great, so then I move that we're going, that we appoint Justin to, to see if he can write a general policy that will regard, that will, that will give us some kind of framework as to how it's working. And, and it's going to be, you know, it's growing pains, folks. This is the first time we, I mean, we had a Town Administrator a long time ago, but that was, you know, that was a little bit different. So now we need to build a team. The goal is to get as many things for, as many grants for the town as possible. It's not who is going to get, they're all going to get the, the kudos for it. We just, we just need to get those, those grants in there. And there are a lot of grants that are, that are going to be available. All right, so that's number eight. And number, and number nine, look, look at this, we, we actually, we actually talked about two things at the same time. Number 10, I have no idea what this means, internal transfers to overtime.
I do, please. According to the Finance Committee meeting last night, they believe that I transferred money to overtime and I'm being paid salary as a Town Administrator, but I obviously didn't read the internal transfers because it was back when I was Administrative Assistant and being paid hourly. I assume that's what it's about because it came up at the meeting.
So as a.
The date was actually May 3rd.
Right, the date of the transfer was May 3rd, but it was for time worked prior to that.
So you waited that, that long to get paid?
No, you have to pay people no matter if the account is over and we're only allowed to do internal transfers in May and June.
What do you, I, I, I think it's a valid explanation. I don't think it'd be.
It was no funny business.
Well, it would be very simple to, to determine if there was or there wasn't because, I mean, if it's, you know. Human Resources and Town Administrator Job Description. I'm not really sure about this. Right now, what's going on, which the public is aware of, is, is there's an unprecedented five-town joint task force to hire a full-time human resource person that would be shared with the towns. This is a, this, the human resources is, is one of the things that we really need here, a professional human resources person. It's very rare to have one, a Town Administrator that is versed in that. And quite frankly, given the litigious nature of everything, I'd rather have it, have somebody that's completely separate. Melissa, when is this, so when are the?
As I mentioned last week, I believe it's July 12th, we're placing the ad and resumes are due by August 2nd.
Okay, great. And the resumes, so, so my question is, do the boards get copies of these resumes? Who's going to be?
Five towns have agreed that the, our little group, the Town Administrators will do the initial interviewing and sorting through the resumes and will come up with as many candidates as possible to bring to the towns for their final.
Do we get a chance to look at them at all?
Sure, they're public records.
I would like to see the resumes.
And they, everybody offered that if one member of the Select Board wants to be a part of the committee as well, we can, but they don't want to do all of them because then we have to post it as a public meeting.
Gotcha. Okay.
I know Don had his hand up earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don, I didn't see your hand up.
I put it down.
Oh, you put it down, I'm sorry, Don, my apologies.
Well, while you, while you have me on, just ask a question. Did, did the Finance Committee approve the transfer on the overtime? Because if they, I can't recall, because if they didn't for the fallacious reason that they thought it related to the Town Administrator, I should think that the Select Board ought to send a communication to the Finance Committee to make sure they approve it at their next meeting.
They did not and it was because they had asked for a reason and no reason was given to them.
Check with, check with Michelle Mellon. All right, we'll, we'll check, we'll check with Finance on that. Did we ever, did we, did we, do we have to have this presented in front of us before, I mean, to, to vote on this? The, the payment of the, of the overtime?
You guys have already approved it, we're waiting on the Finance.
Right, okay. Great, annual appointment expirations. If they're annual appointments, then they, they just need to be reappointed annually. I'm not really.
I think, if I remember correctly, in the long form, it was about some appointments being, having no ending. For example, I think the Fire Department has no ending on those appointments. So I guess the question is whether or not we like that policy and if it's policy, we want to continue.
Well, so, so, and I don't want to put you in the company because.
Well, there's, I think there's, there's other appointments that are, have no end date.
But generally, yeah, and generally, I believe that firefighters should be, it's up to the Fire Chief or, you know, or their, or their executive body, but if, but to have firefighters expire, I, I don't know how that would benefit public safety. You know, so.
Well, there, Fire Department is not the only appointed position that has an ending in our system.
So years ago, council advised that if it didn't have an appointment required by law, it didn't need to have an expiration date. For instance, don't do the highway workers, pedestrian workers, firemen, there's several positions that are required by law to have.
And I don't know how, how having required expiration dates benefits us since there's only, there are supervision, but they're also under the supervision of their department heads. If they tell their, 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 certain people are no longer required, they would make.
People have their mics open and we can't hear a word you're saying.
Oh, oh, okay. What's wrong?
Tom, also his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, yes, go on.
If someone is appointed with a, to a position that doesn't have an end date, are they just there until they resign or quit? Or can the Select Board that appointed them, or a new Select Board, reappoint somebody else or how does that happen?
They're an employee at will, so until you're fired, quit, resign, retire.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could hire somebody in your, in your stead, but then we're essentially firing you, not you. And again, a lot of this is, is leftover. And again, a lot of this is leftover from the way things happened around here, you know, many years ago. So, again, but having automatic expiration dates for highway workers and firefighters and emergency service personnel, don't, I don't think, I don't know what the benefit currently, you know, currently is. If we need to replace a highway, if someone decides somebody in the highway is not working out, we would replace that individual. So that in effect would be their expiration date. It just adds another layer of, you know, things onto, onto the governance of town. So, I mean, I don't see any, I don't see any need to change the policy.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not readily apparent to me at the moment why it would be problematic. So if people have thoughts.
Yeah, if people have thoughts, if department heads have thoughts. I mean, we will have an all-boards meeting at some point, and, you know, we could certainly, we'll certainly look for feedback at that time. Melissa, you can put that on the agenda for the all-boards meeting.
And we're doing an open meeting law.
We're having an open meeting law meetings.
Okay. Anyway, contacting council policy, I think we already talked about that.
We have an existing policy.
We have an existing policy. Access to town website. The town administrator has been given the role of monitoring that, and should somebody need specific access, we provide it to them. I can't believe this. So we're down to comments.
Steve?
Yeah.
My hand. Oh, comments and questions. So I, I'm curious, I came in a little bit late.
Yeah.
Most of the items on the agenda are items that John put on. But he's not at the meeting. Why is he not at the meeting?
I don't know.
He didn't notify the board that he wasn't coming?
No. I don't, yeah, I don't, Justin, do you have any ideas of why? I don't know. So we have no idea, and, but we need to continue with the town business, regardless of who shows up.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions, too.
Mike.
If I have two questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, do you know when the links to the videos of the meetings are going to be put online? That you voted to put online?
We're having, I believe we're having a technical problem, because the links, because with our system, it's not.
No, that was putting the actual videos on. Links are put on, they're all throughout the whole website.
I can't put the videos on the website via link or anything at the moment. It's not compatible.
Of course. And the other one is, how come, Steve, this is to you, because you're on the Lake Garfield Working Group, how come there's absolutely no minutes put up on the website?
So I would contact the chair.
Nothing. I've contacted Melissa, I've contacted the chair.
Have you? You contacted Steve? I can ask him.
Yep.
I don't think it's anything nefarious. Some people have, some people, it takes them a little while of pushing.
I mean, this is back from 2019, so it's a while.
So you're, I'm sorry, you're stating that there hasn't been minutes from the Lake Garfield Working Group since 2019?
Never, never.
So, okay, well, I will definitely, I will definitely check into that.
Okay, and I'm also, I did a RAO request, too, so Melissa has 10 days, and then I'll contact the state, so thanks.
I responded to you, Emily, that they, we don't have them. I provided you with what we've had. So if you want.
Yeah, but if you don't have them, if you actually go by the RAO guidelines, you have to contact them and say why.
Okay, very good. Your comments are noted. Justin, do you have any, do you have anything else?
I noticed Don started his hand, but it might be from.
Oh, Don, do you have your, do you have your hand up, Don? I see a little hand up, no?
I think it was just from speaking earlier.
Now your, now your mic's off.
That was from before, I'm sorry.
That was, no problem. Okay, everybody, if there's no other business in front of this board, I would move to adjourn the meeting until next time.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, everybody, thank you. Be safe.